Corbal and Mr. Carter Fellows previously indicated they would not be able to attend.
Okay, can I get a motion to approve our June 13th, 2024 reading minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any public comment on non-agenda items? Hearing none, we'll move right into the Zaholski Plaza site plan, old business. Consideration of an application for a site plan approval from Aaron Neemis Holdings for the Zaholski multi-tenant commercial structure located at 801-821 Bebaut Road. Applicant has requested a 90-day extension from current deadline of August 6, 2024.
All right, though concepts for this proposed development have been floating around for several years, it was not formally submitted until January 2nd, 2024. It was initially considered at the February 8th Planning Commission meeting where it was tabled to allow the applicant to submit and receive approval for a consolidation plan and to address other outstanding deficiencies. As part of this, the applicant requested, and the Planning Commission granted, a 180-day extension of time limitations to August 6th. Since that meeting, a consolidation plan was received, reviewed by this body, and approved by council. It is currently in the process of being recorded. A revised plan was submitted by the applicant on July 1st, 2024, that was meant to address the other outstanding deficiencies identified at the February 8th meeting. Because the next Planning Commission meeting isn't until August 6th, August 8th, this revised plan must be considered at the July meeting. Acknowledging that this did not provide much time for staff and the township's consultants to comprehensively review the plan, the applicant has requested a further 90-day extension until October 4th. As a reminder, the property is 6.7 acres in the area along Bebaut Road, stretching north from the Bebaut Valley Brook Roundabout. It is currently vacant and located in the mixed-use activities center district. However, it is completely surrounded by low-density residential properties, including the Orchard Highlands Residential Development to its north and west. The applicant is proposing a 25,900-square-foot multi-tenant office retail structure with associated parking and landscaping proposed. Eighty-five parking spaces are proposed, of which 51 will be located under the structure. Since distributing our staff report, the applicant has provided floor plans and an updated parking garage layout. These items show the proposed locations of stairwells and elevators and has allowed staff to calculate the amount of off-street parking required per the zoning code. We have also been able to review the plan in more detail and connot the following major changes from the original plan. As mentioned previously, the parcels have been consolidated, and the existing conditions largely reflect that plan. The sidewalk network has been redesigned more efficiently. The entrance driveway has been widened and a median added, and three off-street parking spaces to the south of the structure have been replaced with an emergency vehicle turnaround. Despite these changes, there are still many deficiencies with the plan, which are outlined on the screen. The first four bullet points outline stormwater management concerns that Josh from Gateway can speak to in more detail if there are any questions regarding them. The zoning ordinance limits the length of surface parking lots in the mixed-use activities center district to 200 feet in length. The proposed surface parking lot is 341 feet in length. Additionally, based on submitted floor plans, either 91 or 98 parking spots are required, but only 85 are shown. Finally, though the sidewalk network has been redesigned, concerns remain regarding the entrance driveway crossing and lighting. As mentioned previously, the deadline for action on this plan is prior to the next meeting. Therefore, action on the plan must be taken, or the applicant's request for an extension must be accepted. As planning staff cannot recommend approval at this time, the two options before you tonight are to either accept the applicant's request for a 90-day time extension or deny the plan. Many of the planned deficiencies outlined on the previous slide were brought to the attention of the applicant prior to formal submittal earlier this year. They were again noted prior to the February 8th meeting when the 180-day time extension was granted. Despite the significant amount of time, these fundamental deficiencies were not addressed in the revised plan. Staff is therefore recommending that the request for a further extension not be accepted and that the plan be denied.
The applicant, if you have anything to come up and say, please introduce yourself, write your address down.
My name is Andrew Zaholski. I am the managing partner of Aaron Neemis Holdings and also the applicant for the property. Basically, yes, you know, our intention is to work with Planning Commission and bring the plan into compliance. As you guys are well aware, in the intervening months, there was quite some excitement regarding a different plan that I was working on, which required my engineer's focus to, you know, attempt to bring that plan into compliance, although, again, that plan was ultimately rejected by this body. But, you know, it created a substantial time distraction, so, you know, I'm just requesting that, based on that distraction, we be given a little bit of extra time to address the comments. We, you know, our goal is certainly to work with the township and come up with a good plan, and, you know, we would appreciate the opportunity to do so in a non-confrontational manner.
Mark, in the event this plan is denied tonight, what are the applicants, can the applicant just reapply and becoming compliant?
Yes.
Okay.
So by, just by denying it tonight does not mean that they can't come back and submit a similar plan, hopefully address the additional comments that we have here. There's been, as far as I know, no changes to any ordinances that would impact, you know, the future plan that would be resubmitted. So essentially, they could submit something very similar to what they submitted today, or previously.
Thanks, Mark. Any Planning Commission comments?
Could you go back to the next slide then? I'm just trying to understand the timelines. We've already extended it 180 days.
Yes.
What's the original window? Is it 180 days to start with?
It's 90 days from the first Planning Commission meeting after receiving the plan. So I forget what the original deadline was, but based on the wording of the request in granting, it was 180 days from the day that the request was made and granted, and that we, that went out to August 6th. In retrospect, yeah, maybe we should have looked, counted those days out, maybe given them a couple more days so you could have made the August meeting, but it is what it is. And then, this additional request was for 90 days on top of the...
So it's original 180, then 180, and on top of that?
Effectively, yes.
Okay.
Can I ask for, because the August 6th is 180 from...
February.
February. It's not 180 from when the deadline originally was?
Correct.
And the deadline originally was 90 days?
90 days, yes.
So essentially, the 180 days was only 90 extra days, because 90 of those days were the days that wouldn't have already been allowed in.
I would need to, I would need to look at it more specifically, so I don't want to speak to that.
Any other audience comments?
I mean, it feels like it's been 180 days, and most of this is still yet to be addressed. I feel like that's not a good faith effort to come into compliance with the plan, because the comments are already made prior to January, so to me, not really too favorable towards another extension.
So are you making a motion? Do you want to make a motion?
I can. Sure, I'll make a motion to deny the request for an extension.
I'll second that motion. I feel the same.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so we will now vote on the plan.
Correct.
And please, when you do, make sure you state the reason why you may be either denying it or approving it.
Okay. Any thoughts on the plan, or other commissioners?
I think we have significant deficiencies here that have been identified by both staff and our engineering consultant. It seems like several of these would be variances if they were to be approved, and we're not in sequence for that right now, correct?
Correct.
Gotcha. I'd like to make a motion that the Planning Commission deny the Zaholski Plaza site plan as identified in staff's memo of July 3rd, 2024, specific to the outstanding planned deficiencies as enumerated in that document, as well as those recently added from our recent review in both the gateway letters.
You got a motion and a second? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Zaholski, as you know, you heard the staff, you can always come back and resubmit once you're done. Thank you. Next on the agenda is the Courtyards of Valleybrook, consideration of an application for preliminary development from Tom Robinson for the Courtyards of Valleybrook Townhouse Development located at 350 Valleybrook Road.
Yes, real quickly, as stated, this is an old business item. We reviewed it last month. And what it is, is a plan for a development that contains 12 townhomes located on six acres that are situated along Valleybrook Road. Since we all already reviewed this, I don't want to get too far into what has already transpired, but I will note, some of the items that were discussed in particular at the last meeting had to do with the location and the design of the different intersections with Valleybrook Road. Similarly, also the location design of the sidewalks on the site, and of course, we also talked about the roadway internal to the site. So just to orient anyone who is not familiar with the site, I just have here a couple of slides there, or a couple drawings that show the existing conditions of the development site itself. This is Valleybrook Road here. I believe Rawway Drive intersects right about here, and this area in red is the development site currently. Again, this is about six acres. In terms of the proposed development itself, there, in many ways, it remains the same. It's still 12 individual townhome units situated on four buildings. Each of those units has its own driveway and garage that then access a private drive, which then accesses Valleybrook Road. There's also landscape buffering proposed that will help buffer the development from Valleybrook Road, but where we see some changes from last time has to do with the easternmost intersection here. This originally was a right-in, right-out intersection with Valleybrook Road. It is now proposed to be a right-out only. In addition to that, the road itself has been widened to 24 feet wide, and in doing so, the sidewalk was removed, but in place of that sidewalk was the addition of a new pathway that connects down to the Arrowhead Trail, which runs along the southern edge of the property.
Is that open to the public?
The, well, that'll be a question for Mr. Wetzel, who was consultant. It was my understanding that it probably wouldn't be given that it's accessed as a private drive, but the goal here was really just to make sure that those pedestrians that may be coming from the development have access up and down Valleybrook Road corridor, and in this case, it would be by the Arrowhead Trail.
Mark, was the unit or the building on the far right slightly shifted?
Yes. Yes, I should have mentioned that. As they rearranged this entryway here, this road, this set of buildings, or this set of units in this building here was turned probably about 45 degrees or so. Originally, it was perpendicular.
Right. Then there was a spur.
Right, and that is gone as well.
That's gone.
Yes. The other thing I'll point out here, which I forgot to mention, is there is a gravel turnaround area proposed, and this is on the township side of the parcel there. So in terms of recommended action, we are recommending conditional approval, and those conditions will be based upon the conditions found in the letters from consultants and from staff. Gateway has reviewed it, TPD has reviewed it, and have minimal comments, although I'll note that Josh Scanlon from Gateway is here, can address any of the comments that he has. In terms of the comments that I have, the, probably the biggest outstanding one, well, there's two really, one was about lighting, and I believe they're going to address that, and I did just get a review letter today, which Mr. Wetzel can probably talk a little bit more about. And also, I will note that in that review letter, they mentioned that they would be looking at reviewing one of my other comments regards to that new pathway that is proposed, but potentially looking at seeing if there's a way to minimize the number of steps. There are a handful of steps in there. There is a great difference. My thought was, well, can we minimize those number of steps we don't have, just to make it easier for people with bicycles to go up and back and forth through the path itself? I do know that the consultant does have a presentation prepared, if you guys are interested in hearing that, but other than that, that's all I have for this particular item.
The 90-day time clock, if it expires September 6th, if you go back to 90 days, that would be June, when did the 90-day time clock start?
June 13th.
Yes. Thank you. Yeah, basically, it started the last time we looked at this, which was June.
At the last meeting?
Yes.
Is this detention pond going to be used by the development?
The existing detention pond, we will not be using it.
Okay. Was that the site one time, or some kind of a cafe roundabout?
Yes.
Is that plan now being canceled?
As of now, yes, correct.
Are we going to have like a formal announcement of that, so you can't come back and do that? Did we approve that plan?
I don't know if the cafe was approved. I do know the medical office was approved.
The cafe was approved.
It was approved, yes.
How does that work? I mean, would we want both of those developments going side by side now?
If I remember correctly, from looking at plans, a lot, some of that actually, plan actually took into account development on this particular site they were talking about, so they would have to amend that land development plan to even start that.
They'd have to come back, okay.
Yeah.
Basically, this plan would really void the, the work that was done, or approved on the cafe site.
Gotcha.
And the bathroom?
Oh, correct, yes.
Yeah, and if you look at the list here, there were several items that were either proposed or approved, or both, most of which I believe go away with this development, with the exception of the grading variance and floodplain variance.
Please.
Sure. Once again, Mike Wetzel with Victor Wetzel Associates. I know a few of you weren't here at the, the last meeting, so what we'll do is we'll kind of go over our, our presentation to kind of bring you up to speed on, and all of that, but in regard to our first slide, really what we're here is the 12-unit plan for the Courtyards of Valleybrook. It's 12 townhome units located really where the medical office building was, and partially where some of the parking of the cafe was in through this plan. And what we'll do is we'll kind of go through our presentation of the overall site plan, and really what will happen in regard to the development. So as I, as also mentioned, once again, the site is 6.7 acres in size, and it's really located within this area that you're here. This is the parcel where the detention parcel is located right now, which is owned by the township, but Mr. Robinson has a 50-year lease on it. The time when we did the cafe plan, Mr. Robinson donated this lot number one to the township along through this section, and really what we have is the Arrowhead Trail along through here, Valleybrook Road along through here. This is where the parking lot is for the trail parking within the plan. And then we have Rush Run that runs through the area through this section. This is the Brookwood Residential Development that's also, it's very similar in regard to design private streets associated with the plan. They also have a boardwalk access to, to the trail within the upper portion of their, their site within, within the area. So we'll look at the site a little bit more into here. We're really just breaking up by here, showing the parcel of 6.7 acres in regard to the land, and we're outlining, once again, parcel two, which is owned by the township, and we have the existing detention facility in through here. We will not be accessing that detention facility at all with, with this development. And this goes back really to when we had the medical office site approved, or we showed both the, the cafe, so it gives you a little idea of what was actually happening. Once again, that's the property line that was kind of separating the township parcel in through here. This is really where we have two townhome buildings in through here, so it's really voiding what's happening in regard to the cafe site. And then what we had was that large parking area in through here, the big parking court through this section, and then that was the approved medical office building area. Really, the site that we're looking at is really in through here, and with this, we'll be having really less, less impervious surface associated with this plan by really eliminating all that parking, making a smaller building within the plan, and really kind of working with a project. We'll kind of call this what's happened over the last four years, your, what you've seen with probably projects. COVID has taken a toll on, on, on some developments within through here. Really not a market anymore that was happening right before, the COVID area in through here, as well as what we're finding from Mr. Robinson in regard to the cafe and people wanting to use that site. Excuse me. So we look at the existing conditions of the plan, as Mark had also highlighted, when we did get the medical office site approved, we did apply for a grading permit, and as you know, coming down through here, the site has been graded already, really to the subgrade of where the medical office site would be, and you can see really where the grading has taken place along and through here. This is once again the, the outline of the existing detention area and the loop of gravel that takes place over in this area. We do have, once again, Rush Run through here. We do have a floodway, and then the floodplain lines, all part of the head grass study, and once again, all part of the site grading that takes place. There's the dual sanitary line that runs through the site for right, long, and through this section. Then there is also a overhead power line in through here and along Valleybrook Road. They will not be disturbed at all with, with this development. So this was the original site plan that we had within the plan overall, and really solid, the big changes are we removed this access in through here, provided the turns in through this section. In fact, if you could maybe just go two slides, Mark, we won't need to go through the text. Oh, go one more. This was the original plan right in through here. This was where the, one of the concerns was really more of a, it's in a private street over along through this section. So you can see what we've done is to change the, the orientation of the road, remove the right-in, right-out, making this a right-out only along and through this section. We moved these buildings away from being parallel to the roadway and really making these two units much better, because they are now facing more towards the woods, the trail, and Brush Run within the plan. We have widened the street along through here from 20-feet private drive to a 24-foot private drive. We have some visitor parking through here with the CDU, which is similar to both. We did originally have the sidewalk located right along in through here, and in doing so, we removed that sidewalk by putting in the trail access through this portion of the site overall. So what we've done is taken a lot of the comments that we went through and hashed out at last Planning Commission meeting, and, and made these changes to the overall plan. Now, just to also reinforce, the road system in through here will all be private, will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. This community will also be a maintenance-free, limited, maintenance-free living, so there's no grass cutting, no leaf raking, no snow removal, and all will be done by the homeowners association within the plan. The driveways and sidewalks within, within the, the units themselves will all be shoveled by the homeowners association. So it really becomes a true maintenance-free community in through here. The townhomes will be built by Scormezy Homes. We have Paul Scormezy also here with us here tonight in regard to the, the units within the plan. We have discussed, just as an informational purpose for the Planning Commission, we've had discussions with council about Mr. Robinson purchasing the piece over in through here that's owned by the township, and the master plan would be really kind of continue and add additional townhome pieces within this portion that would face Barush Run in through here. At this time, we're still kind of in negotiations or discussions with, with council about how that process of, of purchasing that would, would go through. It would really end in a cul-de-sac within that plan is, in through here, but really where we have the ownership of what Mr. Robinson owns in through here, we're having the, the 12 townhome units within the plan.
Mark?
Yes?
Eliminating the sidewalk, widening the road, what impact did that have on the driveways to each of the minutes? Are they the same length?
We still have what's considered a minimum of 25 feet located from the back of the curb to the, to the front of the garage. That has not changed at all. What we did was basically swap out the sidewalk, and that added in roadway. So that's how we achieved in through here. Now, there are plenty of developments within, within the township that, as if private roads do have something similar in regard to a narrow or cartway width, but really through discussions, what we had with, with yourselves here last month, we decided to go ahead and move forward with adding the wider paving section through this section. So it had no impact to the driveways, still 25 feet away. So when we're really, once again, look at the overall site within, within this area, the, more of the mustard color is all open space. We've got about just under five acres of open space, or 73% of the site that'll be reserved in open space within the area. This development doesn't require any open space with it. So this is one of the perks that we will have in regard to the site by really kind of, especially maintaining the woodland area section in through here, as well as the slopes that lead up to really where the Arrowhead Trail is along through this section. What's really nice in regard to the site is, you know, the access to the boardwalk over to the, the trail, and as I mentioned, we will be working with staff in regard to some discussions about how we can maybe eliminate some of the steps through here, but we have, once again, within this area, very flat and open space that could be used for informal recreation within that site, and I believe we'll maybe look at trying to come up in this area to gain access up to the trail. Is that what I saw out of the site? Yes, yes. So if you happened to drive by here recently, Mr. Robinson has come by and mowed that area, and it's something, Mark, that you might want, we can maybe take a look at. He's looked at some access areas, maybe moreover, and through this point, that might not be needing steps within the, so that's how we're kind of looking, looking at that. So, but I think, once again, one of the advantages is still providing this access at one, one form, all the way over to the Arrowhead Trail, which will continue all the way up Valleybrook, the Bebaut, all the way down to really past where Mr. Robinson built the Always Be Smiling section, so it will provide a nice amenity in regard to the plan. And this is once again, just the detail of the current plan. These are photographs of the, of the boardwalk that was built at the Ruffview Farms Development up the road. Same type of scenario, we'll have a crossing over the creek in through here, and one of the advantages, even if we have steps, you can see right along through here, this is how you do work bicycles up, up the steps. You build a, it's basically a ramp where you just bring your, your tires in and you ride, ride it up. So that's already kind of a design item that's, because as you've mentioned, Mark, that was one of the concerns about the bike going up.
Yep.
Even with steps, we'll be able to really kind of still get that up into the site if we do have steps. It's a nice design feature that makes it a lot, lot easier within the site. In regard to the utility plan within the site, these are once again, the existing sanitary lines in through here, connection over and through here, connection over along and through here, and what we'll be proposing, very much similar to the medical office building, we'll be doing underground detention underneath the paving area. So again, that detention area will be owned and maintained by the homeowners association. We do have an existing sand, or storm line that works its way down through here. We'll be bisecting, bypassing the line through here. There's an existing connection over and through here for a head wall. We'll be taking the water that's coming through here, bypassing our detention, because that's all coming from above our site, but once again, we'll have our... But once again, we'll have our inlets in through here, we'll go into the underground facility here, inlets in through here, that'll work itself in and then eventually connect into the pipe that we'll be building. There is also an existing storm line right in through here. We'll be bypassing the line over along through this section of the site. All other utilities will be extended into the site underground. And once again, this is the existing storm line coming in from the development north. We're not at all touching or doing any work in regard to that detention area or any of the sanitary line that's located in through here. In regard to the landscape plan, we have the required buffer yard plantings within here. We also have a rain garden that was also a part of the office site, medical office site that we're still maintaining through this section. So we'll be adding the required buffers along Valley Brook Road through here as well as over and through here. Some foundation and plantings located along the buildings. Some of the trees are not located in front of here, but that deals with some of the sanitary and other utilities that take place. Peters Township Sewer Authority is very much a stickler, not having any trees within their 25-foot easement area through that section. So that's why there's no trees in through here, but we'll also be having some landscaping that will take place. And once again, the existing trees that will remain through this section as well as the whole back hillside along and through here. Buffer yard planting was one of the engineering comments from the month previous, and we had already submitted and made those revisions at our last meeting.
Let's talk about the front, because I really liked the job, and this is how long I've been on the planning commission, well before they did that, the development up the street, which is really well done. And in connection with that, we were sticklers on the landscaping requirements in front. So you really don't see all the, you know, because Valley Brook Road right now is so oversaturated that way is a disaster right over here. So I'm really concerned about having proper buffer so we don't have to see all the townhouses on, just like the plan up the street.
Well, you can see that this has--
It's hard to tell here by this depiction.
Essentially, what you have, a series of--
How big are the trees?
I'll let you describe them, but the three and a half inch caliper to start. I believe there's some evergreens mixed in?
Yes, there are some evergreens mixed in. There's a, you have a, what's considered a buffer yard seed planting requirement located right along in through here. So there's a requirement of 13 trees and 120 shrubs proposed within the plan. In fact, we're actually exceeding that in regard to the number of some of the plantings. But we are, once again, meeting all the buffer yard requirements in through here. One of the items that we can't necessarily get too high on is because of the electric line that takes place right along and through here. So we need to be able to provide--
Does that electric line also go into the plan up the road?
I don't think it crosses the street further over on this side through there. So that's how they were able to basically put a wall of evergreen trees in--
Yeah, they do. It looks good.
Through that section.
And these are deciduous trees, correct?
Yes, yes, they are.
So they're not going to be as full?
Yeah. What we can do is look at providing some more evergreen screening within our planting through this section.
Yeah.
I agree with you.
Yeah.
I mean, it's a beautiful plan. It's the question of that buffering, I think, is going to be important, especially when you're backing out of those units. It's dark on Valley Brook. That's a unique situation there.
Well, up along and through this section, these are all evergreen trees except for the three deciduous. Those are more of what's called a green giant arborvitae. Very good in regard to deer resistance, but they make a heck of a solid screen through there without the effects of a large evergreen tree. And we'll provide an A because of the road in through here, but also, once again, to give you privacy. And what we'll do is we'll take a look at adding some additional evergreen trees.
How about the H and P? Do you have it?
We don't have that yet, so that's all. We needed to make sure that we were moving forward with the plan that could go forward with the--
What's the likelihood of receipt? Any issues?
Oh, we don't foresee any issues.
Okay.
I noticed that you had, we have the understory trees, we have the shrubs. We also have rain garden, buffer yard and rain garden and shrubs. Just want to make sure that we're, you know, there's a buffer yard requirement. And then, I don't think there's a requirement for planting rain gardens, right, Josh? I don't think there is. It's just a seeding mix. You aesthetically do it, it's good for the design, but I don't think it's a requirement, is it?
I don't believe it's a requirement in the ordinance. I think there, I mean, you can speak to it, but I think it's probably just selecting the right plans for that requirement.
Correct. We have actually more shrubs within that buffer yard seed in number one, and a lot of those taken in regard to the rain garden.
I'm not a plant guy. I would just encourage that the most significant buffer we can do there to kind of visually make that as opaque as possible.
Sure.
I understand you have issues with the electrical lines there. That would be just, I think that's my main question. Everything else looks pretty tight.
Next slide, I think that will call action. In regard to the lighting plan through here, at the CDU location of the visitor parking, we'll have one post lamp. That'll be the typical post lamp. They'll provide the lighting over at that parking area. And then each townhome unit will have a post lamp fixture, one next to the front door and one above the garage. These are more of a small residential that you see on everybody's homes, really in most cases, like a 60-watt light bulb associated with the plan. We did provide a detail to the township here this afternoon of what those, where those lights are. But really, a 60-watt light bulb is about an equivalent of an 80 lumens type of fixture. The ordinance requires that anything over 1,800--
Yes.
--be accounted for by a lighting plan. So, but we did want to make sure we showed that there are lightings that's going to be taking place at each unit through here. Oh, this must be the older one. Ah, I didn't change the slide. Make the change. So we have a couple floaters over in through here. So really, what we're here is that tonight for preliminary plan approval for the courtyards at Valley Brook Road, 12-unit townhome plan within the Valley Brook Road corridor. We hope this is the last site design you'll see on this particular portion of the site in regard to everything we've done in regard to a medical office building, a pizza restaurant. And really, we feel this is a best and good use of really what's happening now in this corridor. And I think the only time we'd hope to be back is to continue the plan over and through here. Glad to answer the questions the board might have.
Is there a traffic impact fee?
There is.
1,000. I'm sure it's letter. What is like 12,000 change?
Yes. It's roughly a little over $1,000 a unit.
So you don't have any conditions? You're just assuming that we would add any if needed?
Yeah. In terms of, I don't have it up here, the conditions, I would just condition it upon the review letters of myself, Josh here, Gateway's letter, and TPD's letter. Most of those things are minor comments that will be addressed anyways in the final plan stage, but this way it just gets them on record as to needing to be addressed at some point in the future. And then obviously, any conditions that you would like to see, I recommend adding as well. So those conditions are outlined in the attachments. I just want to make sure we reference it correctly.
I don't see any. Where are all the conditions?
There are no conditions.
They were in your slide. I don't think we have them in part of those.
Okay, let me grab that.
I don't think we received the letters at all.
Right here, these are the three conditions and the proper dates for the letters. And addressing them, we already know that they've been working on addressing those three letters. And like I said, my letter, the two outstanding items really had to do with the lighting and, well, and the trail. In terms of Josh's letter, most of that stuff was stuff that needed to be addressed in the final plan, and I believe the same thing is true with TPD's letter. Would you want to put the landscaping into final? Or how would that work? While you're in there, Joe?
Yeah, I'd like to--
We can add that, right? Add that condition?
Yeah.
Maybe should.
Mark, don't we really put as a condition the traffic impact fee? Or is that going to be in the final?
Well, that would be, if we miss it here, it would be in the final anyways, but we can certainly add that. It's also number one on the TPD's letter.
Oh, it's on the letter. Okay, I didn't see that letter.
Yeah. That was in their letter, actually, even from the month before through there. We haven't yet received the current one, but--
Okay.
But yes, we know that there will be the traffic impact fee.
All right. Any other comments?
Sure. The broker's going to make-- Yeah, I'd like to make a motion. Before I do so, I'm going to say something like enhanced screening with visual opacity, something that we can review with staff, and then we'll review it final.
Yeah, we understand where you're coming from.
Got it. I'd like to make a recommendation that the, I'd like to make a motion that the planning commission recommend approval of the courtyards of Valley Brook Road preliminary plan, subject to the following four conditions as outlined. On the slide above included the Peters Township review letter dated July 8, 2024, the TPD review letter, deleted July 9, 2024, the Gateway review letter, delayed letter dated July 9, 2024, and the request for enhanced screening along Valley Brook Road and the buffer yards, specifically to evergreen trees.
I'll second.
And also the traffic impact fee.
Yeah.
So that would be five conditions.
I'll second again.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for your time.
What's the timing?
I hope to see you here very soon.
Oh, good.
As you can see, most of the site is ready to go.
Yeah.
We want to be able to jump on that.
Good. Good stuff.
Thank you.
Mike, you. If you didn't get this letter--
Yeah, we're--
I can say--
Joe, Mark, anything else?
I think I just sent it to you this afternoon, but we'll double check.
Oh, okay, yeah, I didn't see it.
Anything else?
Just a staff update. We've got a, I sent an email to everyone, but there's going to be a joint meeting with the planning commission, council, and zone interviewing board. Sorry, hold on. Doesn't matter.
Yes.
On August 19th.
Okay.
Yeah, essentially, what we're looking to do is a handful of items. First one is being the comprehensive plan. We want to discuss the comprehensive plan, what, you know, we'd like to see in the plan. Is it a true update or is it more of a holistic revision where it's basically going to be a brand-new comprehensive plan? We want to discuss what we'd like to see in that plan. There's also a handful of zoning ordinances that we'd like to start thinking about. Some of that has to do with our review procedures for land developments. Also has to do with, we have potential changes that we'd like to see to the cell tower ordinance, our certificate of occupancy ordinance, rental ordinance. There's a handful of other items that we're looking to discuss.
And that'll be at the joint--
That would be at the joint meeting, yeah.
Great.
So 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM. It's going to be a Monday night.
Did we set it at 7:00 or is it 7:30?
I heard 7:00.
Okay.
We'll send something on.
We'll definitely send something down.
I'm going to be here.
It'll be, I--
As far as I know.
Yeah, we'll probably set tables in the middle of those. But, um, yeah, it's, we'll send out more details as they become available, but I sent that email out previously, so you'd all save the date, and we're kind of just talking through with you tonight, so that, since it's something outside of the norm, so--
Sure. Sounds good.
But we'll, in the coming weeks, you'll get more information.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I had.
Meeting adjourned.